With that's their claim to fame.
Of a corn, so I'll take the motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda in a minute.
I'll say it.
Movement second, any further discussion, your non-nos, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Rich?
Morning, how are you guys?
Good.
Good, good. Just kinda gonna stay away from people for a while.
Alright.
Um, so not much to discuss, well, there is, but there isn't. As far as weather goes, guys are out plowing, they've been plowing all weekend. Um, the biggest thing I have for you is I've been, you know, still working on, I know we've got the county budget and stuff done, but still working on the DOT budgets and programs and met with WHKS last week and of course, I don't like to be the bearer of bad news, but I'm gonna give you an update on where our bridge funding is at. Um, we met and there's a few bridges um that we obviously need to get taken care of sooner rather than later. Um, one of those bridges is a, is on the National Bridge Registry, but doesn't qualify due to low traffic count. So it's a bridge that needs to be fixed however, and I think it could do, I think that one is one that we can put a box covered in, but um it's not really so much getting it done, it's paying for it. So our HBP funds, our bridge funds right now are currently at a negative 143 borrow ahead, so we're 1.43 years borrowed ahead. We're allowed up to 4.5 years to borrow ahead in that fund. So sitting right now with the projects we have let, we can only borrow just a little over a half a million dollars um today, I guess, to do any other projects. Um, the problem with that is, is that we only forecast, right now we're forecast only a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for fiscal year twenty-two. It's a three percent decrease from last year's funding. Now, this is all based on last year's funding and it doesn't include the uh, the new federal bill, which we don't know when that money's gonna come. But, so right now, I'll tell you that we've done in the last, since the summer of twenty and including the summer of twenty-two, we'll have done or will be doing 1.2 million dollars worth of bridge work. That's about an average of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per structure. So you can already see that that doesn't add up to our yearly funding of one hundred and sixty-five thousand if we're trying to do a structure for three hundred and fifty thousand. So I've been trying to forecast our bridge needs and what we have for funding. And right now, for the next four to five years, on top of our borrow ahead factor of the half a million sitting today, we can borrow a half a million, but we're gonna need an additional 1.3 million just to do four or five bridges in the next five-year program. And that is assuming that nothing, that the costs don't increase substantially, however, I don't know what they're gonna do. Some of these, a couple of these can probably be box covers, but it doesn't include any of the local bridges like the one I just mentioned, that doesn't qualify. So um you can kinda see where the needs are for what we, what happens, and I still don't have the full uh, bridge report back from the structural engineers yet to know what we need to plan for. He, we just sat down and did immediate needs uh for bridges. So um, just where I'm sitting right now in the forecast, you know, just to do the projects we have, and that's about one bridge a year, we're still gonna need 1.3 million dollars. So um, obviously, we either need to figure out where to find the money or how to, how to, I don't know. We can't not fix some of these bridges, but we just, I'm gonna have to sit here and prioritize a little bit more on what we need to do, but um, just kinda telling you where the funding's at. And I haven't, I haven't looked at foreign to market account yet. I spent a lot of time on the bridges. I guess the theory behind it is we can, nobody likes to hear this, but you can drive on a crappy road, it's hard to drive over a crappy bridge. So um, but they're two different funds and I'll work on the FM funding here. Also, we've got till the April fifteenth to turn that program and budget in, but just wanted to give you an update on just kinda the forecast of the dollars and cents of things. So.
Good.
Nothing everybody likes to hear is that we don't have enough money, cuz that's, everybody says that, but right now, that's the nuts and bolts of where we're at, and we can obviously move things around. And that all assumes that the funding is kind of consistent too. I mean, hope, we're hoping that funding increases, but um you know, we saw a three percent decrease this year, and the more we fix things, the funding is based on, on square footage of poor-rated bridges. So as we fix things, the poor-rated bridges decrease, so the funding decreases. And it's not like we wanna hope that our bridges get worse, we can get more funding either. So we're just kind of, you know, I, I, I've looked at other county stuff too, but I mean, a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year in bridge funding just doesn't satisfy the needs at all. So anyway, I thought I'd give you that bit of great information to ponder on.
And then, we decided, you know, we had to put together a list of bridges here a while back. Anyway, we talked about using TIF funds for them, so we use TIF, we kinda screw ourselves too by doing that, don't we?
Yeah, we, we, we fix things.
By doing that.
Yep.
We'll take a lot of bridge funding if we did that.
Right, but then again, we don't, we can't, we can't not fix things cuz we can't drive over stuff. So I mean, it's, it's a, it's a damned if you do, damned if you don't. So we're just gonna, I guess we're just gonna, to me, we just keep fixing things and finding the money to do it, whether the funding changes or not, you know. There, from what I understand, the, the new bill, the federal bill's gonna have bridge funding in it for larger bridges, so we will evaluate if there's competitive grants or something that we can get for that funding, we'll evaluate that, you know, and try to get some of our bigger bridges fixed, but just kind of an update on where we're at.
Yep, okay, appreciate it. Anything else?
Um, not that I can think of right now.
You guys have anything for Rich?
Okay, I'll stick around if something comes up.
That's good. Ryan? What's a good word?
So I got a couple of pictures here, I'll show you. I don't know if they're gonna come in to do testing on the air quality today or what. They didn't call me Friday.
Okay.
Um, anyway, so the air handlers live directly above where we did work. I had him come in and check them out just for dirt, dust, all that. Um, and they found a bunch of mold, so we're gonna test the mold and then whatever from there. But these are the, this is just the um, the blower motor. And then this is the um, so that's like the duct up in there, that's just a small little spot of it. And um, all that black is mold. So he looked up in there and he said it runs all the way through there. We checked the clerk's office. I don't think that one's as bad, but still has some in there. And it's all, what do you call it, like fiber board stuff? So you can either replace all the duct or they can go in and clean that, which they have to be careful when they clean it because it's fiber board, and then they can paint it on the inside to help seal it, but that's just basically a five to ten-year band-aid. Otherwise, you have to put all new, new in to get, basically to get rid of it and keep it from growing.
Right.
So.
So do you give an estimate?
No, he's going to, he was gonna write something up and do that. I don't know if he was doing that on Friday. I thought he was gonna come up and take samples, but I didn't hear from him, so I'll call him today. But he's gonna give me two separate, one for these two and then one for the clerks. We have to do three tests, and since the two up here uh have the same return, we're doing one test there, one test on the clerks, and then one test in his office, cuz you have to do three anyway, so why waste one?
The whole facility looked at.
So, yeah, so the whole building will basically be covered, but those are the, and I can send you those pictures and email to or whatever, but that's just off a really small, small, small camera that he stuck to there, but um, gives you an idea of what it probably all looks like. So.
The sample, stay concealed, and then with the estimate, I want someone to call us to basically clean them.
So hopefully, one day this week, he'll have that for me.
Okay.
Yeah, shoot my emails, shoot emails up, I guess we can kinda keep up on it.
Yep. Go from there, I guess.
Thanks.
Yep.
Uh, drainage planes. So, does any questions? Take a motion to approve.
Motion.
Sorry.
No, second.
Who's the second one for the discussion? Non-nos, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. You got a call, John, or is he coming?
Down Alphonia's. Okay, so we got that figured out.
Yep.
Hey, five one five.
Nah, you gotta hit nine first.
Nine, one, five one five.
And you can leave it on the hook.
Oh. But you had to pull it off to hit speaker.
Nope.
You got your one. You got nine.
Oh, yeah.
Get your adventure.
Nine to get out.
Yeah.
And then one.
No. Four, six, zero. Nine, six, nine, nine.
Don't use those much anymore.
Well, it does.
John.
Hey, John.
Hey, John.
Morning.
Hang on, we gotta get the volume up.
How about that?
Yeah, I can hear you. You hear me?
There we go. Yep, we can hear you.
I haven't used it for six months.
Yeah. DD eleven, what's going on?
Uh, so we're getting close to filing that, we're getting through the last of the schedules, there's, there's a lot of them. And so one thing I wanted to, to touch base with the board on, so that you're aware of kinda how we were gonna do it. Uh, we're gonna try to break it up into, to sections, so that we don't have to send notices for the entire district to everybody in that district.
Okay.
Um, we, we've got the main schedule, which everybody would have to get.
Yep.
But then we have some big laterals to the south that we could split off, so that just those lanes down south would get those schedules and not everybody north and vice versa. And um, that's how we're gonna do a report to try to break up those notices. But then the question comes with the hearings, as we get into that, are we gonna wanna do everything all the same day, cuz it's really all the same information, but then we're looking at, you know, forty-five thousand acres worth of landowners or so.
Yeah.
Uh, all being in one place at one time and I would, and at least, at least six different district hearings. Um, I, I guess part of what I, I wanna talk to you guys about is, do we wanna take that risk and just try to do it all as one big ordeal, have everybody in the room at one time, and we can try to get it all knocked out as one shot? Or do we wanna try to break this up as much as we can to uh keep the meetings smaller?
Might wanna break it up.
Otherwise, I was gonna say, we gotta switch to a bigger venue and maybe go to like Kansas or something.
Because.
Oh, yeah.
I, I would do it if you got it sorted out in, in five or six different sections, let's do it a section at a time, we'll just space the meetings out over the day.
Okay.
Take a whole day to do it, that's fine.
Except for how much overlap do you have?
You're gonna have, you're gonna have some landowners overlapping, but.
There's a lot of overlap. Uh, everybody will be in, in the BD eleven main.
Yep.
Um, and maybe we do that one last, we can do all the smaller sections. On, you know, break it up into sections, so not everybody has to be there. And then we can talk about what the main will look like and approve that at a separate hearing at the end. And so hopefully, at that point, people have already seen it, they know what it is. They're not gonna be surprised by it, and you're not gonna have as many people show up for that one.
Right.
I think that could work.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I'm doing.
Okay, so as we get closer here, I'll get Jackie the information and we'll start trying to sort out timing and, and whatnot on, on how to break those up. Um, I know she did ask about BD thirteen.
And I forgot that was in there.
Yep, that is in there, that'll be done here shortly, and that's actually one, because it's a separate district, we could pull out and do that separately early.
Good.
Just to get it over with.
That would be good, so we can assess.
And she also, yeah, so I think that was actually pretty much done. I'll talk to Alex, make sure that that's done, but we should be able to get that one knocked out pretty quick. Um, and then DD forty, was it forty-six?
Yeah.
That nine, uh Jacob is looking to have that done here at the end of the month.
Okay, good.
So, so that said, with all this reclass, we do need commissioners appointed. And so I don't, I don't know if you can do that today's meeting, or we wanna wait here, it's not quite ready yet. Um, and I can get you a full list, Jackie, so you, you know exactly what districts need those commissioners, but.
Uninterested landowners, right?
Yeah, so essentially, we're looking at somebody from the southwest or uh, well, yeah, more or less the southwest half of the county.
Mm-hmm.
So. Um, but again, that doesn't need to be today, but that is something that needs to be, at least in the back of your mind here coming up. And if we could.
Two of those?
If I could have the same commissioners for all of them, it, it'll help speed up everything.
Is it two?
It's two.
Okay. So we got a lot of stuff coming up.
Yep.
Yeah.
Rainers time again.
Again.
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, it's a good thing, it needs to be done, but it's just, it's a lot going on.
John, well, you got your own phone updates.
Yes.
What about DD fourteen?
Uh, let me talk to Jacob over here, hold on just a second. Yeah. BD fourteen. All right, I got Jacob here. Perfect. Um, Jacob, the board is asking where we're at on BD fourteen. We're planning to survey it as soon as we get up there when the frost comes out.
Okay.
Early spring. And that's where we're at with it. Um, we got a couple of projects ahead of it, including seventy-two.
Mm-hmm.
In Ward County, the ditch, and DD two, the ditch, which we're working on.
Okay.
Now.
All right, I've just.
And I did, I, but sorry, go ahead, AJ.
Uh, sorry, yeah, I just went and get some inquiries about it, just kinda curious where it was at, so no big deal.
Yeah, uh, I had gotten a phone call from one of the landowners that was suing the railroad or, or not suing, but there was a failure of the pipe under the railroad, and his attorney called and they were asking about how they could how any leverage or anything they could apply to help the district. So I know that um, landowners are thinking about it and they are trying to find creative solutions. So um, we have been talking to a few up there to try to get something worked out to either get the, the permits or that at least waived or no cost, things like that, they can save money for the district.
Sure. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Are there other questions?
No, I talked to Jacob the other day.
I talked to Mark. Yeah, that, and we're kind of filed seventy-two, then this most, okay, that small ditch there taking over. Yep. And DD two, the plan is shouldn't done here in the next week or so, it sounds like. Yeah. This winter, okay, yeah, so, so DD two report should be uh hopefully February, uh plans are more or less done at this point, then we'll get the report done, so um, yeah, it'll be coming up fairly quick as well.
Okay, sounds good. Ready for a month long. Get her done.
Yeah, I haven't seen you guys for a while, I think we'll be seeing you a fair bit here for.
Yeah.
I'm, I think.
Okay, sounds good, guys, appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you, talk later, alright. Plains, some claims, quite a few like this, right?
Yeah.
Behind a week or whatever. Oh, we didn't do any last week.
We didn't anyway.
Did we?
Yeah. He did.
Okay. It wasn't that much last week.
Any questions on the claims?
The dollar amount isn't much, but I'm sure a lot of them.
Take a motion to approve the claim.
I'll move to approve claims.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, for the discussion, non-nos, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry. Orts.
Share monthly, quarterly, fourth of four. That's order.
Motion to approve the reports, motion to approve the reports. So sorry, I'll second it. For the discussion. You can sign me though.
Oh, yeah. So it's just on the.
Payroll. The amendments to law enforcement today.
Um, today is Stratton and Cameron's.
Annual increase. Take a motion to approve the amendments. Hell, um.
I'll make that a motion.
Sir, second.
I will, sir.
For the discussion. Your non-nos, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry. Appointments, get me, get me appointments for these boards.
Okay, so we have an economic interest person for NIAAC cog, so like a business person or whatever. Um, one, I cannot, or one eminent domain person, and that's just a person, just somebody having um knowledge of property values. And then I talked to Andy Helwison, and he would like to step off of the NIAIC cog revolving loan fund.
Okay.
So we need to find another banker for that, which I, I don't know if we've ever asked the guys in town or not, if they're interested or not. Maybe Andy, Joel Suth, or somebody like that, maybe.
Good.
So need to be a.
Worth County resident.
It has to be a resident, not just a banker that works and.
Hmm.
Sure, as Jeff down at Manly, but he's, I don't believe he lives in the county.
Somebody down there.
But, yeah, he don't, he don't live in the county, otherwise, so. Aaron. Aaron Carmen, maybe.
Yeah.
Him and Andy and.
Chad.
Yeah, Chad and also, yeah.
I think they stay pretty busy, but you can at least check.
Well, I'm sure, Chad, I know Chad.
Chad's on everything.
Right.
Yeah.
Banking and farming.
Yeah.
Yeah, like it meets that often, but. Yeah. You're gonna ask them, start with them and work their way down.
All we can do.
Where's your homework? Oh, is it snowing again?
Yeah, blowing pretty good, supposed to snow and blow. Looks good, days.
Good.
Business fiction. About that one, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
You're gonna ask those bankers?
I'll talk to um Chad.
Start with him, man.
Yeah, see if he'd be interested or not. I don't know how, I mean, did Andy say, I don't even know how often they meet on that revolving loan, or if it's just more or less emails.
As needed, bro.
Yeah, exactly. They just get basically emails and all the info and the info comes in, but, yeah, I'll stop.
I'll stop on top of Chad today to consider. I'm gonna domain, just thinking on that, be a landowner or something.
Yeah.
Basically.
Anybody with, you know, land knowledge.
Okay. Okay. All right, we're ready for a while, supervisor's letter of support.
Yeah, saw that letter, he emailed it out last week, went to Jeff Greve, went to John Danos. Um, they're kosher with it, basically just showing the support that we would like to give, uh possibly give ready fuels on their project on a family. Um, all of that obviously is determined um later on, when we update or renew plans and actually get an agreement with them, but but uh, yeah, I said both attorneys approved it, so if you guys are in favor of supporting this project, that's why it's here.
Yes, I am too.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the letter to support, letter of support to ready fuels for their project.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
For the discussion. Very non, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion will carry. Alyssa, you on?
Good morning.
Morning.
Um, last week, we met with IDAG and WCTA and Heartland Power. Um, they brought up a company that is interested in doing a full um illustration for the interchange. So I followed up with uh the president of that company, and he gave me the timeline, it'll be about four to six months before it's complete, but he should send me the scope of his work and um a couple of other things within the next couple of weeks. So when I get that off, forward it on to everybody. And then Wednesday, we had our advisory board meeting. Um, we had NIAIC cog there and uh there was a lot of participation and it was kind of exciting to see everybody interact with everybody. Um, it was almost two and a half hours long. So thanks, Enes, for coming to that. And then Friday, um, I, as well as Beth and AJ, sat on a call with ready fuels to explain some different programs. So I've got some information requested from them, and then um if they can give me that information back, we can better have a projection for the company.
Okay.
That the drawing deal, did, did you say that Heartland and WCTA were gonna cover the cost of that, right?
Yep.
Uh, yeah, it sounds like that.
Fantastic.
Yep. Yeah, and this guy would also be interested, maybe doing a building if there's tenants, is that right?
I believe so, it is a, it's a company that does investment as far and as, and construction.
Yeah, that's kinda what I took away from there, did, you know. But kinda wanna get a master plan going, I think, for what we wanna look at and how we wanted to look out there, so. Kinda keep it in a tune of the theme, a little bit of the casino, I think, or a little bit of rural Iowa type of look.
Lots of flashing lights.
Yep. You know, more rustic, you know.
Right, yeah.
But flashing lights, of course, yeah, white area a little more, so, but yeah, it was a good meeting. Um, I said, I know with Melissa on that, and uh, they definitely got some knowledge of this, and he's done quite a few projects throughout the state, uh different areas, different towns, uh you know, small storefronts like that. Had some good, good concept drawings there. Had some good, good concept drawings that we're forced to look at and so kind of. So you can see that and hopefully get that site moving out there, so. It'll be a good step. So thanks, Melissa.
You bet. And tomorrow I'll be in Des Moines at a renewable fuels summit. So I'll be out of the office all day.
Sounds good.
Be careful, it's some cold.
Yeah.
I'll try.
Blow down there anyway, that's for sure. All right, is Chris on today? I didn't see nothing, so.
No, I did. Jackie sent an email with.
Yeah.
Some, it's P five testing. And. So what it is, is EPA is looking for these. Basically this stuff in the water. They haven't found any in this area yet. They did, they tested St. Ansler and they came back clean. They have found some in eastern Iowa. Oh, but if you read that, that's, it's all paid for by EPA and like DNR's ones doing the testing. But hopefully we'll stay in that trend because the tests that they take are about three hundred dollars a piece. And if we, so if we get into that threshold and we get stuck doing that probably quarterly. Three, three tests minimum, I think. So it could cost another four or five thousand dollars a year if we end up. So hopefully we'll stay in that trend of, of what they're seeing in this, this region, but they were doing a hundred and. Hundred forty seven different facilities throughout Iowa. It's a, it's. The name is about yay long. It's basically byproducts associated with farm chemicals. And so there, that's what they're looking for. Like I said, they found like two places, they've already done like a hundred places around and where it is. It's in eastern Iowa is where they're finding it. So basically if they don't find any here, then they'll leave us alone for a while. And they'll kind of, you know, come back and check it, but as of now, it's just a very expensive test and hopefully we won't get stuck with the requirements.
I didn't know if it was a solicitation or if it was something we had to do or.
No, it's from EPA and I'll, I can talk to Chris, but he should know about it. Yeah, because it would, it would go to, to them as the operators and then DNR would be involved with it too. So the DNR will be contacted and to do all the testing, I'm sure, so. So hopefully with a little luck, we'll stay in the.
Department ads. Joel, you've been in for a while.
Oh, I sent an email out to everybody. We've got a, an alert situation with the Ukrainian Russian conflict. If that escalates, they're probably thinking Russians will come and hammer it pretty hard if we step into it. So I'm just asking everybody to be more aware. Or, you know, we've got the new firewalls in place, so, you know, we're not looking bad, but you know, it takes one. The phone system, we were kind of hoping that that would, the public health technology grant money would take care of that, but. We found out that that can only be spent for public health, so we can't use those funds. You know, I, I had the money earmarked anyway, so I think we'll probably be able to form with that project here in the next couple of months along with. The multi-factor, I've been putting that off, but we'll probably have to do that sooner rather than later. So let everybody know on that. Um, it's up to you. I mean, if you want to pull the trigger on it, um, I think we're, I'm good to go anytime you want to do that one. Yeah, I think it was fourteen thousand, I think was the, so we're, we're talking about, currently we're with municipal CMS for our website. They've been doing our website for, yeah, ten, twelve years, probably. They've done a fantastic job. Neapolitan has come in and given us a quote in a demo and they're currently doing Jackie's election. Website and it's, it's really.
User friendly.
Very user friendly. It's, it's quite a bit newer technology than what municipal CMS currently has, so. I think Jackie and I kind of made the decision that we're probably going to go forward and make the switch to those guys. Marion County has them right now and it's a, it's a really nice website. So we're probably going to make that jump here in the next couple of months. You guys won't see much. A big difference will be, I think it'll be easier for independent departments to actually update their stuff.
Then doesn't, they can update and it doesn't often filter through you if they just want to put a notice out on there, then it's.
They can do it right now. I mean, there's some departments that do it right now themselves, but it's kind of a clunky process, AJ, which Neapolitan makes it very easy. If you can run a Word document or something like that or email. And the reports coming from those folks are. Pretty good, pretty good reports. You know, right now we're just using Google Reports. You know, for visits and things like that, where Neapolitan actually will, you know, they'll. Present reports to your, or. As far as traffic. With that kind of stuff, so, well, yeah, I think probably next couple of days. There's, there's a process involved with that. We'll have to get some. No, no, yeah, we're kind of bored right now. And like I said, we're, we're still having issues with the. Supply chain as far as technology purchases go, you know, there's not a lot to be purchased at the moment. But I know Jesse's going to replace all of her, you know, desktops with laptops, just because of that grant.
Well, plus the software updates are pretty much being mandated to her.
Yep, with RAM going away and moving to the new. And that's, we're having a demo tomorrow with those folks. I've got some, I've got some questions about what, what underlying technologies they need. Just update you guys, I don't know if you heard that Tyler is trying to push everybody to cloud.
Yeah, I think he told us this once.
Yeah, they're wanting to push everything to their cloud on E W S, which is Amazon Web Services. I had a discussion with the, the sales rep last week. You were supposed to be, it's okay. I'll give you a pass. And right now, anything new they develop, new modules will be on their web only platform. We will not get those, but. Everything he was talking about was nothing that we would be interested in, so for the time being, we're going to stay status quo and keep everything premises. Probably when we refresh our storage here in the next two, three years, we might look at seeing the cost. Benefits of maybe, you know, moving them to. But it's going to cost more.
Surprise, surprise. Wait, why can't we go back to paper?
You go right ahead, AJ.
I'll buy the tablets. But that's all I've done.
Teresa was asking there from the reporter's office, F E, F E H, and. I guess this past month has really highlighted where we need to continue these discussions and move ahead. Probably need to get through the urban renewal stuff here first and then we need to be.
Well, and I did shoot an email to John Danos.
Okay.
Just to see, you know, because that, that nine hundred thousand and that, that addendum or whatever from F E H, that's what kind of. And I kind of thought, wouldn't you have to have financing in place and stuff like that before you commit to something like that? So, so I'll see what he, what his answer is on that. I, I would guess, you know, it'd be better, you know, instead of continuing to amend the urban renewal. Be kind of nice to do a bunch at once. But I'll just have to see what works out.
And that's what, when with any discussions I've had with John, that's what we're trying to do is, is update it so we can include. Facts, incentives down at Manly, we can include tipping of the new or a free board county win project. And then we can also put this, do it all at once, instead of doing multiple, multiple ones where it costs us probably five thousand or a time to do it. Do it, do as many as we can in one shot and get this all incorporated to what we want us. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's not one.
We, we have to do something. Something has to be done.
We're jumping on the grenade, but we got to jump on. I'd rather see it in my election year, but I don't.
It's been coming for the last years and it's been. Kick down the road, but it's been.
Well, that boiler, we just cross our fingers every year basically and nurse it along.
Nineteen fifty or fifty one. Down here looking, that's what they said. I think that was on the tag or something.
That's when they made them.
I probably missed that call, the extended warranty.
There was a question, was Brian turning that off today?
I'm not sure.
Oh, to maybe clean the.
The traps.
Traps or whatever.
I thought that was happening.
It is warmer, but it's windy unfortunately.
Hopefully it fires back up because you're, you're sure you're going to want it tomorrow.
We got the gorgeous. Yeah. Supervisor Weekly then, you know.
Well, we all went to the Work County Farm Bureau meeting and there was quite a discussion about the ambulance service. They had a lot of questions and AJ did a good job of answering them. I also, we went to the group benefit partners. And we'll cross that bridge down the road. We kind of got an idea what we're doing there. The biggest thing. The needest deal was no longer have to fax the forms in.
Oh, for the health.
They're picking up the codes and documenting it themselves, because that is a mess.
Or wellness program.
Physically, you don't have to fill out the form anymore.
No longer faxing that in. They just pick up the code, attach it to your name and go, oh, they did their physical and off and go.
Well, that's what he said.
Well.
They're taking care of it on their end.
Yeah.
Because it gets coded through the insurance billing. For annual physical and they will just send that off, so you no longer have to ask your doctor to.
They'll make it a lot more simple for people to do.
There's some doctors want to charge twenty dollars to do that.
Really?
In your world. I had Windworth Vetco, like Melissa said, the advisory board meeting. Myrtle Nelson was there and went through. This whole brochure on what's available to cities and counties as to how, the different things that they can help us with. And the things that they can write for us. And it was quite interesting. The one thing she did bring up, she made sure that the mayors and. The county people knew about that was the ARP funds up to ten million. You don't have to document nothing anymore.
I'm, there, there's still stuff we have to do.
But you don't have to prove it. You know, before.
No, you don't have to justify.
But you've made, you gotta make sure you send it, you spend it on county or city government. Has to be for project, but she, she said any place you wanted to and to make sure I was right on this, I even called down there on Friday and double checked with their supervisor. So look into it because.
Supposed to be simpler.
It's supposed to be a lot simpler for you. You know, so. And the other thing that we did was we decided to take all the board advisory board terms. To three years instead of two and three where we had them offset and then offset the years. So they all went to three years. And. Terry Derby did bring up about the windmills over in Winnebago County where. They redid some of them and he said they didn't do redo the base or anything. And they came in and. Wanted to start over on them again at zero. For tax money and he said that they've gotten in touch with the legislature, so. And they're not the only county that this has happened to. I guess Story County it's happened to and there's some other ones out there too, so. He just wanted to make sure we were aware of that.
Because they have some that were only a few years in when they re-powered them. I mean, like a year or two, actually a couple. Well, they took what they had, I think, at the time and then they had the ability to upgrade them right away, so they did. Went from like one point five to two point five. I, I'm not exactly sure, but I do remember them doing that over there. And at that time, when they did it, they didn't know how it was going to turn out, then they missed it, yeah.
They would like to stay at thirty percent. The windmill companies, of course, would like to go back to start. Because it was going to make quite a difference on the one school system. So he kind of relayed all that information to us too. That's all I had.
Brian said later today for.
They had the, I wish the Farm Bureau meeting was very good, very informational. Um, with the EMS service and a little discussion on, on the. Zoning, possibly zoning and that kind of thing, but. Very, very good. I, I walked out of there happy that they're going to hopefully look and help to support the EMS service. They're all relays, that's, that's a need, so. And then I had. Conference call with Melissa and the ready fuels folks on Friday. Melissa threw a bunch of homework at them basically, so we could get a, try to get evaluation figured out on that facility and what it's going to actually generate for taxes and that sort of thing and. So they're, they're going to get that stuff taken care of. And I get it back to Melissa anyways. But there, some of their already do head on everything. So hopefully we can keep going in that right direction. The study support will help them on their next steps, so. Yeah.
If you're able to.
Working together with us?
Yes.
Yeah, they, they're having issues over there of. Open and, and getting the help. Right now, Forest City is. Short on paramedics and they're not allowing their paramedics to work overtime. So they cover a good portion of the county just out of that service. Well, if they don't have paramedics available, then Lake Mills is without a paramedic. Because there's the empty service and so they're, they're really trying to figure out what to do. I know they're having some issues in Buffalo Center and Thompson and they want to. He, they were trying to find a way to fund them a little bit to keep them open, keep them going and the big thing is kind of the recruitment and retention of. New and existing body. So they're, they're really struggling with it too and with, with foreign services in the county and they're still having a hard time, so. He was wondering if it was, there was any possibility of a joint venture and I don't know how that would work. The area so spread out so far. And then I don't know how that would work with, with legislation of how it's all paid for, you know. So, and they, they had a meeting the other night, he wanted me to go to, but I had. Department trustees meeting, so I couldn't make it, but. So I don't know where they ended up or what they're thinking, but I know they're really trying to figure something out because Forest City told them basically if. They were going to assess with all this that they wanted them to take over, like the HR, like everything. So, because they're, they're just struggling and having a heck of a time with it, so.
I think it's worth talks, but I mean, you know. Going to go because we do on both sides of the colony, we're always going to have some, every, every county is going to have fringe areas, it's going to be tough.
Yeah, and that's where we gotta, you know, be cautious too, because we're hoping to keep.
Forest City and utilize at least.
Yeah, and that portion of the county, because there's residents over there that would feel better that the ambulance is two miles away from their house. Would, would be better than. Than coming from Kentset or whatever, whatever we get in the future, so it's. It's one of those things, I guess, where, yeah, we've got to have a talk and see if there is something we could do. Joint wise or not, but. That'll obviously be coming down the road, I'm sure, so. Otherwise, that's all I do.
I basically sent to the Farm Bureau and. Insurance meeting and then I also did talk to Terry, that's what I was asking there and. Met with Melissa and IDAG and those and had a good meeting and so that's kind of my week. Next week. Next week, any agenda items we need to add?
And I just, I figured that was a.
First off, just after discussion with Jackie, I just made a quick list of. It's various steps and it just makes it look more complicated than it is, but if you guys look through that. So first off, I will apologize for giving you information you've already had, you know, throughout the years and so, so this might be redundant, but. First off, it's, in my opinion, it's necessary if you do county wide or winter by and county wide, you need zoning county wide. Winter buying regulations are typically zoning in a sense. So, uh, in the legal realm, so now in my profession, then legal realm, you can't really. It's discrimination against other land users if you're regulating or discrimination, you know, really one. And not other land users, so that's where we get into that issue, so if the county basically decides to. Adopt the zoning ordinance, starting with the planning zone commission. Nyco can, we do have the contract and Nyco do all the maps and charts, so we can have the zoning maps underneath that. My recommendation is that just for public use, just so the county is not getting a bunch of crazy questions where they can't understand maps. And most of us can read maps easily, but then a lot of the general public cannot understand a simple map. So basically just have per township and. I assume most individuals in unincorporated area understand which township they live in, they could be wrong. They just have it that way, so if they request a paper copy, they come to county, get it of the proposed, the draft. And then, uh, they go that way, and then also Jackie was concerned about public, feeling like they're not. Represented or, so a law doesn't say you have to have people from, you know, individual townships, does that have to all be from unincorporated, if it's county wide zoning? Just a general, so this is not the state code, it's just a good practice in the planning realm. But another thing that may have wrong, we're counting, has, doesn't have the list of the current commissioners on there when their terms expire. So it'd be good practice to do that, just, uh, if you have an application process, list the appointment processes for. The current commissioners to reapply their terms and or for new individuals to apply, so. Basically, the whole process here in how the state code, its goal is basically just not to let the public. You know, feel like they're not heard, so you want to give them the maximum opportunity to. For hearings, protests, appeals, when it comes to issues like county wide zoning, which can be controversial, so. I'm not here to say, you know, pros and cons about zoning, all you guys know that. So, so basically Nyco can create, prepare the drafts, I know I have the parcel data, so it's easier to do now than. Tweak it and then, uh, once the planning zoning commission members are comfortable, they can send the. Or schedule, you know, planning the, uh, hearing and then, you know, properly notice and then. That's when it would come in, where this is kind of be treated like a rezoning, but. When it comes to counties, the small towns is more relaxed, when it comes to county, you want to send a letter to each property, or you don't want to take shortcuts. Otherwise, it comes back and haunts you if you do any shortcuts, so basically want everyone be. And then know that county is considering this planning zoning, so planning zoning commission will be taking up the burden. Would not fall on you supervisors, so unless we talk about this right now, the supervisors meeting, the better, most of it's shifted to the planning zoning commission. And they, uh, once they're comfortable with it, then they recommend obviously to you guys for approval after a public hearing. Letters you talk about. And then obviously, when you guys ready to schedule a public hearing. For that process, I don't believe you send a letter out for the supervisors public hearing, but in the initial letter, you say that the supervisors will be. The plan is for supervisors ultimately go on. That's, and then, uh, through the whole process, just want to stay focused just on county wide zoning, basically yes or no, you don't want to start getting into changes amendments, you don't want to. Start getting the winter vines, salvage yard, all those other issues, you just wanted then, basically tell the public and then the planning zoning question members, uh. Responsibility would be, keep them on topic and politely say if they're off topic, to stay on topic. Basically, any amendments, updates to zoning ordinance we've done. After, uh, adoption on county wide zoning, using your current zoning ordinance. It sounds more complicated than it is, but I, I believe it's pretty easy. Not too much of a headache, except for the letter, I don't, not involved with the administrative part of counties, but send letters out properly. And I couldn't help draft that letter, but otherwise it's pretty straightforward. Any concerns, questions? Then I am meeting, we do have the, you know, working on the maps and the charts for planning zoning, they sent, uh. Jeff sent me the agenda, I didn't look at it for next week for the meeting, but I'll be giving them all their charts and maps and. You know, some of the planning professionals say, oh, you need to update cop planners, like, well, said Iowa's not too strict on that, basically you have a cop plan, you don't really need to. Get distracted by updating that, so basically just Nyco can continue to make the maps charts for the P and Z to. Look at, analyze and then. We don't know what the timeframe for that is, but a lot of better, you know, no more on next Wednesday. And not too much of a headache for you guys, so we, like I say, the planning zone, I just want to, not empower them, we just kind of use them to be the. Middle, middle people between you and public.
Are you involved in their release then, or they're on now?
Well, I can, I mean, they can, they can request me attend whatever meeting they want, and it's easier now when it's, you know, remote. They just stay in Mason City, but then obviously it's better to meet in person or have a hybrid meetings, like what you guys have. So I don't know if they've had hybrid meetings recently, but. I know unincorporated areas and driving, especially in the winter, it's not as easy, but. It's preferred to these day, you know, these days that have the hybrid. All the, I, all, uh, I can, I don't know what their agenda is, but I don't know if they want to add more and.
Jeff just sent it to me yesterday, I think, I need to post it on the website, so it'll be on the website probably today.
Okay, yeah, so I, yeah, the sentiment I should have looked at, I was like, drive them off my car, I'm like, sure, look at their agenda, so.
So basically, if. Are, are we the ones that are supposed to? Ask them to do county wide zoning?
Yeah, I mean, basically, I think it's something they should have already. I know you guys have been focused on winter by, it's something they should have already been, you know, until we're talking about.
I mean, basically what starts the process if we did go that route, you know, do we have to engage them to do that, or if they come to us and say. You know, we've just had the discussion of county wide zoning.
It's usually so, uh, in most counties, it's engaged by the zoning administrator would. Engage and writes the reports, gives, the staff gives recommendation, but then you get to other jurisdictions and. Staff aren't allowed to give recommendations, it's all ran by elected officials, appointed officials, so it's kind of depends on the culture of jurisdiction.
Yeah, Matt, do they, do you know any idea?
You know, just based on the meetings, the zoning commission, they have talked about, you know, looking into, um. County wide zoning based on. Having a county wide zoning. Wind ordinance, so I don't know where Jeff was directed, if it was from you guys, or maybe from. Nyacog that might be a better idea to look at county wide zoning instead of just. One ordinance that would affect the whole county.
And the issue is in like the general planning practice, you want to have updated cop plan first, and that might be the way Jeff, Jeff's thinking. First, then do the county wide zoning, but then. It's kind of in state Iowa, state Iowa code allows you to have more flexibility, because we do have, currently have a cop plan that's fourteen years old, but. We have jurisdictions that have forty year old cop plans, and I know counties are more, you know, you get more scrutinized legally than. You know, city Algon or, you know, Northwood or something, but sure.
Right, yeah, no, that was, that was one of the things we discussed last year, you know, because it hadn't been touched since oh nine. Where everyone, it was pretty much drafted, I think.
Yeah, cause ideally you don't want. You know, general practices, you don't want a meeting to go beyond two hours when it's planning zoning. You want to train, you don't want to, you know, push people off the commission, because they think me is too long, so. So we just don't want to, it's more of an issue of just taking their time, but it's important stuff for them to address. Cause otherwise, if they don't address it, you know, your means are going to be. Become super long.
And we have enough of a problem, it is giving. Participants for a lot of these.
Unincorporated area, it's even harder.
So your suggestion is?
I'd say, I mean, just. Cop plan and zoning could be dressed simultaneously, you don't have to wait for one to be done before you go on to the other, so. And that, I guess that's why I can say the recommendation is.
So regardless, we just, they still continue working on updating the cop plan. Don't it come down before that's done?
Yeah, cause there's all these different steps in the cop plan, so first off, you want to get all the charts and maps done before you. Think the plan is for, you know, staff, for county staff to discuss the. SWAT analysis, you know, strength, witnesses, opportunities, threats and.
Right, and technically, we still wouldn't touch that two miles outside of any community that has that extended zoning, right?
So I, so you guys have to the rights, you're considering what the communities want. So I think you, you guys have, so usually what the cities do with the county is that you set the extra territorial review agreement. But it's, you guys are ultimately deciding that, that often supervisors will just. Automatically accept what the cities want, you don't want to start fights with the city.
Right, well, I just know we've got a few towns around that do it.
So that's another, that's another part of this puzzle, is Manly's updating their ordinance and then they need to, and I think you serve on their P and Z.
I'm on board of adjustment.
All they do that just because they have, currently it's not zoned outside of city limits, so they have to, they don't have to, but they want to. So that's another part of the puzzle, but basically. The solution is that the county, I mean, the county will just accept what. Comes from the planning zone, that's why. If you guys don't like what they have, you can override that basically.
They say, do you want to start a fight with the city?
Yeah, don't need more fight, it's that invisible border there that, you know, there is something, but you still need to burn it down.
Matt, do they, you have any questions for Matt O'Brien, while he's here?
No, I don't, I think we'll probably shed a lot of light on some of this stuff on February second at our meeting, so.
Thank you. Don't forget your book.
It's pretty well covered, I think.
Are we doing a budget workshop after the main?
We don't, we don't have to today, but I'm open at least next week.
All right, I, uh, I'll move to adjourn.